All right, well, let's start with his life prolonged. So, welcome to this meeting of the Bradlboro Town School Board. We'll start, we'll just introduce the board here and then we'll review the agenda and the ground rules for tonight. So I'm Margaret Atkinson, I'm Chair of the Board.
Mark Truhan, Vice Chair.
Jill Stahl Tyler.
Peter Yost, School Board Member.
Ron Staley, Superintendent Schools.
Lyle Holiday, Cricket.
Oh, sorry. Andy Petrucci, Pittsville Academy.
So this meeting was originally scheduled to be a planning process, a work session for the Board to plan a public engagement process, but obviously there is a need for public engagement, so we revised the agenda to have a two-hour meeting tonight. The first hour is going to be public comment, and I will comment on how that's going to proceed in a minute. The second hour is the Board synthesizing some of whatever topics come up and trying to figure out some steps forward to address ours and people's concerns in a constructive way, another hour. We will rise for an executive session at nine o'clock and then adjourn shortly after. That's the plan. So, we're going to start with public comment. There's a few ground rules. There's going to be two minutes of public comment per person. We ask that the speakers identify themselves for the record, that you address your comments to the Board as a whole as opposed to single members of the Board or in the body. Try to be concise, because there's a lot of folks here who want to speak. Try not to be repetitious if possible, because there's a lot of people who are here to speak. And focus on situations, behaviors, and not people. I don't want to hear personal attacks tonight. We really want to hear a lot of things from people, but be respectful and refrain from that, and try not to interrupt. There's a lot of teachers here, these seem like pretty regular things you've watched in the classroom as well. Mr. Yost is going to facilitate. Ms. Stahl Tyler is the note taker, and Mr. Truhan is going to be the timekeeper. Don't mess around with him. There are many mechanisms that Bodies use to like, you know, determine who's going to go first speaking. I'll leave it to Mr. Yost to figure that out. We could have put names in a jar or something, but we didn't plan ahead, so it's up to you. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. So David's going to record, and as Margaret said, Mark's going to keep track of the time. And I guess the thing, and what we're looking for is ideas about how to structure public engagement. You know, we can't have a private Board meeting, right? Because it has to be worn for the general public. We had hoped that, we had started off thinking it would just be the Board talking about how we wanted to structure the public engagement, but we're sort of doing two things at the same time. And this will be a little bit like making sausage. Shoot, I was not going to make any food, because I haven't had dinner yet, but very bad idea. I'm using up my own two minutes, aren't I? So why don't we have people raise their hands and I'll recognize them? Can you state your name first?
Jen Rice.
Jan Rice?
Jen.
Jan Rice, sorry, Jen.
And can we have people identify?
Yes.
A parent, teacher, whatever, just.
Yeah, and I wrote stuff down, because I'm not very good at speaking in public, but my name's Jen Rice. I've lived in Bradlboro for 22 years. I've sent two children through the Bradlboro Public School System, and I myself was a teacher in public schools outside of this district for 18 years. The people who are here tonight, who came out to speak, wanted to have this chance, this is very important to the people, to have a chance to talk to the School Board about any concerns that they might have. I feel it's important to say that it's not a time to put up defenses, it's not a time to create sides. I think it's a wonderful time for us to open our ears and to be very partial to what people have to say and not get defensive about it. The fact that administrators are part of these meetings, I think, makes it so that some people don't feel comfortable coming out and speaking. I know a lot of people who are teachers and parents and staff, people at schools in this district, so I've spoken with a lot of people, and there are a lot of people who are concerned about things but don't feel safe coming out and speaking about that. So the reason I bring that up is because I implore the Board to find a way to be able to speak to staff members and teachers in this district and just hear it firsthand from them, because they're the people who are most important to listen to about concerns. But I also, I mostly just want to say that I think this is a wonderful opportunity for all the School Board members and all the administrators to hear what the parents and community members are concerned about. It's a chance for our schools to improve, and I urge School Board members as well as Mr. Staley to listen to the concerns, to investigate the concerns, and not just not believe them, to really listen to them, and to work with the administrators and the teachers to address them.
Jen Rice, thank you.
Well, if no one else wants to speak, I guess we can just go ahead and record. Anybody else?
My name's Gail Greenlee. I was a teacher for this school district for the past 10 years. I recently left this school district to work in another. In many ways, because of the frustration, grief, I guess I would call it, over how it is that we are meeting children's needs, not the needs of the bean counters or administrators or that sort of thing, that the actual needs of our young students. And I think I started to feel like a number of the things that I was being asked to do actually constituted a form of malpractice on my part. I was told by a number of administrators that if I was unhappy with the situation, that I should leave and find a new job. So I did, and I also grieve for the district, because I have a little lot of connections with families and students in this school district, and I think it's a loss when we lose teachers because they feel powerless or devalued. And that's what happened to me. So I'm concerned about putting kids front and center. What has happened to developmentally appropriate practice? Is that an archaic concept these days? You know, teachers, how many of you guys can really feel good about how much play you allow your children or how engaged they are? Chelsea, I'm happy for you.
I feel really great about.
Okay, and I will say, another thing that concerns me is that there's a disparity between some teachers who are allowed to do as they wish, and teachers such as myself, who was told in uncertain terms that I was to cease and desist from differentiating instruction for students. And a family left the school district as a result. And what I got from the administration was, it's not our fault, we can't be held responsible for what individual families decide to do. And I hope that you can be held responsible, and you must be held responsible, for meeting the needs of parents and their children, not meeting the needs of the bean counters or, you know, I don't know, Laupelier or Washington DC. We are in charge. We should be in charge, the teachers should be in charge. We care about these kids, and we want to provide for them in the way we best know how. And we must be empowered and enabled to do that. That's what I have to say.
Gail Rice, thank you.
Andy? It's truly a beautiful thing, when teachers are empowered and they meet all the needs of their kids and they're measuring their success. And that, I think, I can only speak for the school I work in every day, but we do that faithfully consistently, and we work hard every day to do it better. And we constantly are searching for ways to do it better, we constantly find ways to measure it better. So I'm really proud of the work we're doing. A lot has been said in the last, in a couple of recent meetings, and one of the things that, it's great that people can come out and express their perspectives. That's a vital part of democracy, so it's great to have everybody here tonight, speaking about such important topics as what we want our schools to be like. So thank you for coming out. One of the things that I've heard in a couple of meetings is that staff are afraid to speak, and they're not empowered. So I'm going to shut up, and I know that I've got quite a few staff from Academy here tonight, and I want their voices, I want the opportunity for their voices to be heard.
So Diana, I think you're next.
Well, I just wanted to say, I'm a Zucchini, former teacher for 35 years. I just wanted to reiterate what Gail said. I left teaching, this is my third year of retirement, not because I was really ready to leave, because I could no longer do what I was being asked to do with children, given the focus on standardized testing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I guess that's basically all I want to say. I mean, there's something wrong with our education system right now.
Hi, I'm Doug Cardine, I'm Tisha Academy's faculty, and there's my tab here there. And many of us are here to speak about our experiences at Academy School. We, I love my job, I love my school, I love the district I work for. I feel honored to be part of such an exceptional group of educators. I, it's a place where I love to go to work, and for the past eight years, our school has developed into a place where students come first. We have many discussions, we have many different disagreements and levels of discourse where it always comes down to what do we find is best for the kids? And I think that's really important, and I think, you know, the students and teachers at Academy School have fun together. We go on many field trips throughout the year, we dance together, we sing together, there's arts in the classroom, and I think, you know, it's school-wide, is what I see. The teachers that I work with collaborate on a regular basis, we work in grade-level teams to develop curriculum and revise lesson plans and share ideas. We have implemented a practice of peer observations, where teachers are in each other's classrooms and seeing what each other's doing, and it's just a place of extreme growth and sharing, and that comes back to the teachers that we work with, and it comes back to the administration that supports us and provides for our well-being. Who cares about our ideas and who listens to us, I feel. We are also a group of teachers at Academy that embrace change. There's been a lot of change in the field of education in the past 10 years, and our teachers have embraced that and jumped on it and always come back to, how can we take this to the best means for our kids? We use data to inform our instruction, we work hard to, you know, implement new curriculums and.
Fish the clock.
Okay. And that's important. I think everyone that walks in the door, I feel that same feeling from them, that they see it as a positive, collaborative, sharing place, and I'm proud of that.
Thank you. I can't remember your first name.
Chelsea.
Chelsea.
I'm Chelsea Wheel, I'm the kindergarten teacher at Oak Grove, and I know that you asked us not to be repetitious, but I feel that there's no way that I can say that I, not say that I'm so proud to have the job that I have, and I feel privileged to work with the kids, families, and adults that I work with every day. I do teach a lot of curriculum. A lot of that curriculum, in fact, all of that curriculum has been designed or chosen by school members in literacy tasks, task forces. And while we have a lot of curriculum that has been chosen for us, I feel like we're given this incredible gift of knowing what works really well for kids, and then also being able to put our own spin on it and learn from each other in the way that we teach it. Oak Grove kids play all the time, and oftentimes kids will say like, did you sneak some math in on me? Like, I thought we were playing, and now you do it numbers? Like, oh man, you're so sneaky. And I love that. I love that I get to work in a place where kids really love coming to school, they get to learn and play, and they read by the end of the year too. And I don't think it's one or the other, I think they were doing a really good job of doing both. But I know that when they can't read, I know why. And I also know that they need to play outside. And I feel like I work in a building and for a district that really honors the fiveness of the kids that I work with, and also has really high expectations for their academic achievement.
My name's Linda Boyle, and I teach at Academy School. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I have worked at many schools in many states, and I feel supported, respected, and I am honored to go out at Academy, the fantastic place to work, and we love our kids.
I'm going to speak really loud, because everybody outside can't hear you, and it's really unfortunate, so I apologize if I reiterate anything.
I need your name.
Sheila Linton, community member, so, and I wrote a little something, so I won't go on and on and on, okay? So, I just want to say that I'm cutely aware of how the things work or have worked in the school system as a former student of the WSASU District, as a former Town School Board member for five years, as an advocate for parents and staff within this district, and as a parent of two children, one who has completely gone through this school system and is now in college, and my other youngest who is at Oak Grove in her last year of elementary school. I have seen through my own series of instances that occurred when I was a child, where school officials on multiple levels should have been accountable to what I was enduring in my school, by not only peers but staff alike. No recourse for the process, the system, or chain of command worked. I find this even more true today. Often things have been changed and watered down before you, meaning the Board, receives them, and your input at that point becomes of compliance, not of understanding or having the power to actually intervene. I understand the puppetry role as a Board member, and though you may not perceive yourself immune to this situation currently, I can contest and have publicly confronted the wrongdoings of administration, staff, and/or my fellow Board peers at the time of being on the Board, and talked about being complacent and perpetuating the cycle of issues that are historical and systemic within this good old boy system of what I call it. I've seen beaten down, I've been beaten down behind closed doors, I've been disempowered by some of the same people who may even be in this room today. I've been instilled with fear that my voice doesn't matter and been swayed in different directions. I've been left out of the process completely. I've had dozens of parents I've worked with, with concerns, not only about the safety of their children and general issues within the school, but for fundamental issues of no confidence in the building principles, staff, administration to manage and/or to adhere to the needs of the population and address their concerns.
Sheila Rice, please.
To the point to where those who have been removed from the schools or have completely left Vermont altogether. So we talk about staff leaving and being shoved out. Well, this is true, not only for our staff, but for our families in this community.
Sheer, others would like to speak as well.
Yes.
It's written down, if you may present it to us, then we will follow up.
Okay, I'm almost done, I'm almost done. So I just want to say that I've worked with many staff, and I've also been with this district for a long time, and I look at the situation as being a situation of standing in solidarity. I'm here not to speak for myself, but to also.
Sheila, let her finish.
You know, I just need a minute, Mark. Just a minute, I know, just a minute, please, okay? And then I'm done, all right? Because no longer work for the district, shoved out reasons that we are too weird and not transparent and lack of accountability with administration. The process is broken every step of the way, and there's a new hurdle. And I use the analogy like the kneecaps, to where every year the scores go up, so it's more of a challenge to try to meet those needs. Well, it's the same thing when you go through the process, that every step of the way has a process which makes it harder to address your concerns. So one thing that I hear the Boards meeting on the 16th of October that I agree with was the system does need to be addressed and changed if it's not working to meet the people's needs, and that includes staff, administration, and the community. And however, the community needs to support in making that happen in all areas. We use ads like today that represent, you know, the principle for great achievements and blah, 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 to cosign the behaviors and acceptability of what's going on. We need to not turn a blind eye, we're not blind, and the small and big injustices are going on in the school district every day. So I'm asking that in, I don't propose a concern without proposing a solution. And so I ask that as a solution, not all the solutions, that 360 reviews from administration and superintendents need to be completely public, that we be given out weekly in the updates or other methods, and high follow-up of encouragement for inputs, that there should be concerns, suggestion box accessible for community to give feedback and ability to be anonymous, but it be serious enough to be addressed. There should be a thread in the meetings to allow public comment, including brief feedback or concerns that are going on with the district. And our climate surveys that are currently used in our school system should be revisited to see what staff and youth are experiencing with regards to district concerns. And I ask to be proactive about these situations and not be reactive to the issues that come up, and to be okay with not being perfect. I hear that people are saying, yay, we love working for the district, we love the kids, this is great, that's okay. But we can't minimize those people who are having different experiences just because we like the experiences we are having. We cannot continue to minimize people's experiences. So thank you. Thank you.
Andy? Well, thank you for letting me speak, Peter Yost. I don't have a prepared statement, but you introduce yourself to.
My name is Andy Davis. I've worked, started off at Canal Street School in Guilford back in the 80s, and I've been in the school system here for close to 30 years. This is a great beginning. Obviously, it's not the right place to have a lone conversation, so thank you for trying to muddle through with what we've got here. I watched very carefully the School Board meeting when Vicky Roach read her letter, and I was really happy to see School Board members going, yeah, we need to talk about some of this. I was a little surprised that some members of the administration that night expressed publicly no recognition of the issues in that letter. I think that's a problem. I really appreciate making a safe space for staff to come here. I love our schools. I pump up and promote our schools every day of my life, not only encouraging people to choose our schools over independent schools in my work, and I love our schools. I also work in two districts. I think it's a tad ironic that the day that Vicky Roach's letter was published in The Reformer, the headline of the paper that day was an article about Dover Elementary School. And I thought it was an amazing juxtaposition, and I would encourage all of you to read, go back and find that paper, I don't know the date, maybe you do. I work in Dover School. Dover School has very good test scores, it has incredible freedom with teachers. I don't know what comes first, the freedom with the teachers or the good test scores? I'm really not sure which comes first. But there's two very different cultures going on in that school and in some of what I'm becoming aware of. I've been just cruising along, enjoying my job, working with the kids, but this year I have been, what's been brought to my attention is problems. There are problems, and I agree with everyone who says that our schools are great, we love working with our kids, great learning is happening, but there are problems in our school. To close, I'll say this. The testing regimen for the last bunch of years, and I have a letter here, I'm not going to read it, it's been meant to go to the newspaper for a couple of years, and I've updated it, but every year when the test scores come out and we're treated to how many schools are failing in Vermont and in our county, our administration is interviewed by the newspaper, and the paper is always assured, and the public is always assured, that those test scores do not fully reflect what's going on in our schools. There's a broader range of learning going on than what's reflected by the failing test scores. I'm just going to go out on a limb and say, those assurances that quality, just great schools is going on unaffected by the test regimen, that's not happening. The tests have really changed, the emphasis on data. We collect data, but we don't collect all the data. We collect numbers that we call the data. There's other data. Instructional time in the art has decreased. I've got the numbers, I can show them to you, anytime you want to see them, call me up. And I know I'm going out on a limb here, I work here, okay? So I'm risking this to just go publicly, and I appreciate the Board creating this space. But our schools have changed. It's less, I feel, from staff meetings, it's less a collaborative, we're a team, things come down from the top. It's more vertical organization, it's more database, it's less across-the-curriculum thematic approach, and maybe there's some reasons why we're doing that, but I think that the schools have changed because of high-stakes testing, and the emphasis on data, and a different style of management. And to just say that the test scores aren't good, but the schools are doing fine anyway, I don't think is a complete answer. The schools have changed over the last 10 years, they have, and I appreciate this chance to get this discussion started. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say that the larger space is now available, so if you want to move over there at any time you can.
Thanks, David.
Hi, I'm Jean Schultz, I'm a teacher at Academy School, currently at Academy School, I've been there for almost 15 years, and I would like to have my voice heard as well. I've seen education change, or especially in the last 10 years. I've not always been super excited to jump on new bandwagons, but one thing I've always gone back to is research. What is the research showing me? What am I learning? And then probably the most important thing that I learned from Andy Petrucci is, what's the most important thing for kids? Not what's the most important thing for me, my team, my teachers. What's the most important thing for kids? And in that time, I really feel that Academy School's culture has changed so unbelievably to being children-centered in the real sense of the world, where that the kids come first. We collaborate all the time in this really great professional development. It's really hard. We're doing math stuff that I haven't done in more years than I'd like to say. We're doing reading articles, we're looking at different ways that we can approach kids, we're looking at meeting all the kids' needs, and now we're taking a lot of data, we're looking at data, and we're saying, what can we do? And to me, that's the biggest change, where before I would say, I'm not really sure what's wrong with this kid, I better call Special Ed. Now I have data and I have things that I can look at and say, wait, I know what to do. And then I have a team of professionals that help me to help the children. It's all about the children. And then this belief thing happened, this thing where suddenly our administrators believed in us, the teachers believe in each other, the teachers believe in the kids, you can't fake that. And guess what happened? The kids believe in themselves, and they believe in us too. So I don't know about what other school, I don't know what's happening, where anything else is happening, when you were a teacher, when you are a teacher, wherever you teach, I can only speak to Academy School and the children there, and what I feel that we do to provide our children with the best means. So I'd like to just end with an analogy. If you had a problem and you went to a doctor, wouldn't you want the doctor to say, I'm going to do everything, I'm going to look at you and I'm going to give you all the tests and everything I need to nail what's wrong? And then, when we find what's wrong, we're going to find the appropriate treatment. And when we find that appropriate treatment, we're going to keep checking just to make sure that. sure that you keep moving forward and you keep getting better. That's the way I like to look at teaching.
Wait, hold on. I do feel like we have people in the hall. Is another space, is it that terrible room?
Yeah, sorry. They're asking...
I mean, they can't hear it. I don't think that's... Where is the other space?
It's all the way down the hall at the end.
Repeat unless your goal is to reinforce.
And I will allow you some wiggle room on the tight, so...
Oh, Chris actually was next before we...
Thank you. So, my name is Chris Gila. I am a teacher at Academy for five years, and I've actually been an Academy parent for the last twelve years. So, just want to say, kind of goes right with what Jean was saying, that it's a very kid-centered environment, so I guess I want to speak as a parent, not a teacher. And my girls especially love Academy School. They consider themselves Academy stars. They embrace the kneecap. They say crazy things like, I can't be sick this week because it's the kneecaps. And, you know, little kids cheer for them, and there are literally cheerleaders at our school. And they're excited and they can't wait to show what they know. And I'm very glad that that's not the only assessment that's used. I'm glad that their teachers are documenting their progress and know how to push them. I'm glad that they have goals to work for. Last spring, Lucy came home and she was like high-fiving because she had met the spring benchmark. Grace had not, but she said, here's my plan. If I read thirty times out loud with you, will you buy me a watch? And then I'll be ready for the fall. So, you know, I'm glad that my kids know what a goal looks like, know how to work towards it, are proud when they can do it. I'm glad that when I go to conferences, you know, their teachers give me materials to support them at home towards meeting those goals. I'm thankful that their progress is monitored and that, you know, their teacher knows how to start the lesson next day, knows whether or not they understood the concept. So, I just have to say I'm thankful. I don't feel like...I feel like it's to their advantage that their progress is monitored. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
And I love working there, too.
Yes, ma'am.
I won't wake them.
No, no, I know. I have to...
Okay. My name is Tara Sullivan. I'm a former Green Street School parent, and my son was there...
Could you maybe stand up and speak loud?
Yeah, my son was at Green Street for three years, starting first and second. And then this year, we moved him to St. Michael's School. And I'm here to advocate for the kids who consistently test above grade level. A lot of the families that we have spoken before last year and had that meeting at Green Street School, and nothing changed very much. So, a group of families are really concerned and love the school because the data was showing that they were above grade level over and over and over again, but nothing was changing for them. And this year, he's third grade. He's already memorized his multiplication facts through five, plus, ten, and eleven. He's adding and subtracting into the ten thousands with borrowing. How do you borrow from zero? You borrow from its neighbor. Right now, tonight, we did division work. It's third grade. It's where he needs to be. And, you know, there was a lot of, well, he's shy. Well, he's not secure. Well, he's...And I kept saying, he doesn't, he's not, he doesn't have ownership of the work you're asking him to do. And he didn't. And this year, he does. And he's sore. He's just, he's, he's where he should be. And I said for three years, he's bored to tears. He doesn't have ownership of the work you're asking him to do. And it was true. And we weren't heard. And so, I'm here to advocate for those kids who are still there. And we will be back for BAMPS and hoping that, you know, things between now and then will change for that group of kids.
Cheryl, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Hi. My name is Susan Rieda. I am a parent. I've been very, very happy for the most part, satisfied with the school district. I guess last meeting was, last time last week, was a real shocker to me. I felt that it was run very badly, that meeting. I was quite disappointed. I was a little bit shocked by how it looked. I didn't like the setup of the room. I didn't like that you had somebody over here against somebody over here with the school board in the middle. And I really especially didn't like it towards the end when the person I was there to hear speak, primarily there for, because I feel like I was really there for everybody, I hope I was, I didn't get a chance to hear her speak. And not only that, I got to watch her break down and be, quite frankly, publicly humiliated. I feel like, I'm shaking right now because I'm so upset. I have felt traumatized because I know this person, I care about her, I love how she taught my son and how she guided him from the moment he got to this country. He was from another country. And that she flawlessly introduced him to this school, all the little details. He got ESL help, too, for sure. But he didn't know anything about money. And my, his teacher had a whole system intact there to help kids to, you know, become, I don't know, like really conscientious about work and just like a barter system, the tokens and stuff. And so, it helped him develop a work ethic. And I was really pleased that it was like a money management system. But the reason I was there really was because I don't like bullying. And I'm not really comfortable with, like I said, how it looked. And I don't comfortable being a bystander. I have interrupted bullying of children before. I've come up to kids where mobbing child, tapped them on the shoulder and said, enough, you're coming with me. I've seen bullying plenty of times. And I'm telling you, you can be as happy as you want as a teacher at Academy School, very happy, but if there's one teacher who's not happy, that teacher deserves some help and assistance in an independent way. And that is why I'm here. I care so deeply about this school. I wrote you Ron last week. You did not return my letter. You know, I have to say, I'm just sorry because I don't want to hear about one person being bullied. I love the school. You guys are fantastic. Who's complaining? You know? I think this particular teacher is fantastic. I'm just sorry she feels uncomfortable, too uncomfortable to be here tonight. That's what I care about. That's wrong. You guys are rigorous against bullying. You care and really care. I felt like my kid was completely saved there. He was reprimanded plenty of times, but, you know, that was, so what? I'm happy that he got the guidance that he got. But gee, you may be happy this week at Academy School. You may be happy running the school. You may be happy on so many levels, but it can happen in a minute and it has to be stopped. You've got to look the people in the eye and say, enough, you are finished with this. And you've got to do it fast. And that's why I'm here. I want to see a fast result to this, and I don't want to see anybody hurt anymore. End of sentence. There's got to be some independence. And I don't want to be repetitive. I have a lot of things I was going to say, but I'm really concerned, and I hope you're concerned. I'm very concerned about every one of you, not just this particular person. I'm very concerned about her, and I deeply, deeply distress at how I felt last week.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to take you and then you, sir. So, you first, please.
Great. My name is Maury Karzik, and I have taught at Academy School for nineteen years. And I have seen the changes. I walked into that building and there were no curriculums handed to me. I walked in, I had to make up everything that I did as a brand-new teacher. And now, when you have new teachers coming in, there's a system in place for them. They're welcomed in. They're able to teach to the fullest extent that they can, feeling supported. In the last seven years, Andy Petrucci has done everything he can to turn a school that was in chaos around. He has been fully supportive of all of us to the fullest extent. I have never once felt scared or worried to go to him or to Jen or to Ron or Lyle and say how I feel or what I need. If I go to them and I say, here's my problem. This is what I need. This is what my children need, he will bend over backwards to help any one of us out. We're here tonight because we feel so strongly about our school. It is very important that you understand how we feel. We work there every day. We are happy. We support Andy. We support our school. We love our children. Our children are happy. We are happy. It doesn't matter what happened twenty years ago when I first started. It doesn't matter what happened ten years ago. That is in the past. Last year's in the past. We're talking about what is happening right now, and we are proud. We are proud that Andy is going to leave tomorrow to go to Washington to meet the President of the United States. He's the principal of the year. We must be doing something at Academy School right to make sure that he is the principal of the year. And we are deeply proud of him. You need to understand, we love our school. We love our children. We are happy. We think we are doing the very best that we can.
So, the applause kind of cuts into everybody's time, and I would, and, you know, and so we want to hear all viewpoints here, so if it becomes a little popularity thing, it may be stifling someone, so yes, just refrain from that. Thanks.
You, sir. Thank you.
Eric Cummings, fourth grade teacher at Academy. Been in Academy for seven years. I've worked at a couple of other schools before Academy. I can tell you that Academy School is the most comfortable, I feel, as being a teacher and myself at the school. My fellow teachers know I regularly make a fool of myself in front of the school for whether it gets kids excited about kneecap or about doing taste tests, you know, getting ninety-three percent of kids to try pretty much any vegetable we stick in front of them at this point after a year and a half. But, so I wouldn't be able to do that unless I was really comfortable with the school and being supported. But I have to tell you one thing, that my second year being in the school, when I wasn't so organized and I wasn't getting things done in a timely manner, I get called into the office. And I, you know, I had a, we had a talk. I felt really, really lousy. It was like I was failing not being a good teacher. You know, it was really, you know, I had a lot of, like, am I doing the right thing and stuff? But I was like, no, I like what I do. I'm going to stick this out. I'm going to become a better teacher. I'm going to do things on time. We were responsible to the point like, two years later, I got tapped to be an AIMS Web Manager, helping people, you know, with the data system we have. I got tapped to be, or to go up to BMI, it's the Vermont Math Institute, to become a better math teacher in planning. And I got back to, and the point that I got to the first staff meeting of the year as part of a project I'm doing at BMI, I led a, I led a session. And I, you know, I convened a group of fellow teachers, and we're doing a little project on partner, how to have a better partner talk during math time. So, I feel very supported in my work there at the school. And one other thing is that I, at our school, I mean, I feel like the older, hearing articles about older teachers getting pushed out, but it's like every week, we have all these teachers who retired and are back in the sub, and so it's great to see them. And I feel like they wouldn't be coming back if they didn't feel like they're supported at the school and they weren't getting pushed out at our school. So, I don't know if it's happening at other schools, but at Academy, I feel like, I feel supported and, you know, I love my school.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray.
I'm Sarah Silver. I used to teach here for eight years, and also I also taught other school districts, two school districts. And I see the differences in the system is that the other school district, every year, they have this principals evaluation going around in the school and also superintendent evaluation going around. It's a long list. And so, I thought that was really good system. And at least for eight years I taught here, there wasn't this kind of evaluation going around. There is a teacher's evaluation, but there isn't administrator's evaluation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jim Olson. I'm a behavior specialist at Oak Grove School. So, I'm in my third year at Oak Grove. I came from a different field and another community organization. I wasn't in the field of education. When I took my position, people said to me, oh, my God, you're going to the schools and they're standardized, test-driven, and everything's about data. And then when I got to the school, that wasn't my experience at all. I had a very different experience. I saw standardized testing playing the role that it needs to play because we live in a world where standardized testing is part of our reality. But what I saw was data being driven. By data-driven, what I saw was this amazing things where kids were in classes, data was being gathered in ways that was kind of not even noticeable to them in these little tiny bits and pieces all over here. The longest thing I saw was eight minutes long. And it was all right in the middle of this really rich curriculum. Some of it was sort of standardized, but I watched really great teachers doing amazing things around it. And then I got to go sit in these vertical team meetings at our school, so I'm at Oak Grove, and I've got, because of my position, I get to work with almost everybody, and I got to go to all the different vertical teams. And I watched teachers sit down and look at the data and really be able to analyze, like, how are our students doing? Who needs more help? Who needs a different curriculum altogether? And it was this really rich, amazing conversation that was all about how the kids were doing. And in the midst of all of this, I'm out at recess every single day, we're organizing soccer programs, we have positive incentive programs, we've got all this really wonderful stuff. And I just see smiling, happy kids walking around the schools, getting outside. And it's amazing, and I'm super proud to be there. And I tell everybody I have this really great job. So, when I hear data, sometimes from folks, it sounds like a four-letter word, but it's been this really powerful tool that's allowing our kids to really reach their potential. So, I guess that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Becky, and then, I don't know your name, but...
Becky Greber. I am a former teacher in this district. I currently teach in a different district. And I am here, I, it's a little awkward. I feel uncomfortable to say what I need to say, but because I know how many great teachers are here from Academy and I loved teaching there. But I left three years ago or so because I didn't at all like the way my husband was treated as the head of the after-school program. And I can't really talk about particulars without talking about personalities. But I feel as though he was lied about to other people, half-truths were told about him. He was made to look as though things were his fault that weren't his fault because he was trying to stand up for how the grant was written and for the diversity of experiences that were supposed to be provided to kids. And he had started a tutoring program and it...Anyway, I think the rule, treat others the way you want to be treated, is not in all cases working. And I think when people, when there are particular people who have issues, it's very easy to make them kind of scapegoated and like, they're different than us. You know, we love our school. There's something wrong with them or, you know, they're, and I think that's so unfortunate because there have been a number of very good teachers and very good people who have been kind of, because they don't have the same experience, then people start to think that they're somehow not as good as teachers. But I think that they're, they are. And so, I think that there's, I would really appreciate some one looking into those kinds of things. I think that issues of when people rise up and feel as though they've been mistreated, I guess I'm echoing what Sheila was saying, it's important to listen to those people. And I guess that's all I need to say.
Thank you. Ma'am?
So, I can see everyone. So, my name is Deborah Air. I'm a brand-new teacher this year, and I was in a full-year internship last year and now in the sub-pole. And I did about seven weeks at Academy School. And I want to just talk just briefly about my experience in those seven weeks. So, I was, it was a very high-pressure situation. I came to the school two days before the students arrived and about a day before parents were going to walk in classrooms. I didn't have a curriculum. I didn't have technology set up. I didn't have knowledge of the school procedures at all. And during my first day... And during my first day in the classroom, I think I was there for like 10 hours, just trying to find the teaching supplies and just physically orient myself to the room. And I felt very frightened because there was so much I didn't know. And foremost on my mind were the kids. How was this gonna look and play out for the kids with this last-minute arrangement? I felt kind of like I couldn't even leave the room to go ask questions that I wanted to ask. Like, who's on a 504 plan? Who's got special needs? What do I need to know? And in that first day, I had to be somewhere between six and 10 teachers on their own initiative come into the classroom and give me that direction. And from that first moment, I really felt that the teamwork at Academy was pretty extraordinary. That I got a visit from the... So I was in the 4th grade. I got a visit from a 4th grade teacher telling me about her students from us. I was able to talk with all the support services that needed, whether it was speech therapy or actual social group work. At any rate, it was... I was really impressed straight off the bat. It was high stakes because each week, we weren't sure if the teacher was going to return or not. There would be a promise to return and then it wouldn't happen. So it's hard to plan ahead. It was hard to know, do I need to take this app again? Do I need to work on field trip planning? Can I plan a field trip? And again, the support from administration and other teachers was really tremendous under those pressures. So... Been in the workforce 20 years. Worked in a lot of different environments. And for me, the thing I've learned to value most is teamwork. When you feel that... I've worked in environments where questions were seen as evidence of incompetence or troublemaking, and this was not that environment. I just wanted to say one thing, which was... So I was covering for a teacher who was out having... Because of problems with the administration. And I was deeply impressed by the fact that at no point was that person treated as anything less than a professional who was returning to the school. I heard it from Andy Petulini. I heard it from other teachers. There was a real awareness that this person was going through a process and we would be professional and supporting about that. There wasn't gossip. There wasn't denigration. I was really impressed by that as well. It felt helpful to me.
Thank you. Do you have any more comments? So take two more comments. Ma'am and...
I'm Melissa Johnson. I was the school counselor at Green Street School for six years and I left last year for what I would call constructive discharge. There's a lot I'd like to say. There's a lot I feel I cannot say at this point. It was a very difficult year and I thought there was an agreement that we would all speak on behalf of ourselves, that we weren't gonna speak as a group. And so when people say, we love ourselves, we love our school, we're great... You know, I think that really, that generalizing can become divisive because then the person who's feeling not so great about where things are at is gonna either feel like a misfit or they're gonna feel like they're missing something. And I also need to state that it is my understanding that Principal Petulini had requested staff attend this meeting. And I think it's important for people to know that. Okay. Well, excuse... Well, so... So, okay. Be it as it may, I wasn't there, but the word on the street is that there was a request for people to come and support. And that's fine. But it also me... It's part of the divisiveness. It's part of saying, be a part of this. Come stand up and show how great Academy is. But what about the people who aren't feeling that way? And so again, it's this... There's a lot bigger issues. Teachers, we're there because we love teaching. We work in schools because we love them. There's systemic flaws. We've talked about that. Those are the things that need to be looked at. One of the things that I personally find really offensive is the fact that you, Mr. Staley, have not made eye contact with the majority of the people who have been speaking. I find that incredibly disrespectful. You're recognizing me and I appreciate that. Well, then you can watch the tape.
Okay, as timekeeper, I also am...
Okay, that's fine.
If it's gonna be a personal attack, we're gonna drive it right there.
What I'm... My point is, if you expect that from the children and we can't get it from the administration, then there's a real problem there. And so my final issue is safety. Buses, there's issues. We know it. I've reported it. I had to leave because of safety issues. Because safety issues were not being looked at. And a lot of people here know what I'm talking about. I'm not gonna go into great detail, but it breaks my heart because as a school counselor, guess who people came to? It was me. And I would go to the proper channels and things wouldn't get followed through. And I can assure you that there's bullying on the bus every day, that there's bullying in the schools. There's bullying by adults. And I just... I want people to know that. And it's really difficult for me to bring this up because I absolutely loved my job. Absolutely loved it. And due to systemic issues, and that's all I'm gonna say, I had to leave. And that's with great sadness. And the parents that I made connections with and the children that I made connections for were really valuable. And there was a lot of really upset parents and students that I've seen along the way because so much of my work is confidential. I can't share what I did. I don't get athlete... You know, I don't get to hang things on the wall and say, guess who I just helped get housing? Guess who I just helped get food and clothing and all the Maslow's needs? That's what I was helping with. And we also have to remember that that is who we're working with in these schools. And it is more stressful for everyone. So I, you know, I recognize that. There's not a lot of Green Street here. Lots of free and reduced lunch. There's issues. There's economic issues. The demographics are changing. Other things have to change. And safety, please make it a priority.
Thank you, Melissa.
My name is Amy Major. I'm the school nurse at Academy School. I'm also the parent of three children who go to Academy. I'm here just really simply to speak for myself and my own experience, which... My experience at Academy is that there's been a momentum since I've worked there for the past five years that there has been a lot of pride instilled in the students, a lot of confidence in the parents of the children that we care for. And a lot of accountability for the staff. The job has gotten harder. It's gotten harder for everybody. And I think that we're all very proud of the work that's happened there. Without seeing like a squad of cheerleaders, I do have to say this, that the... My concern is that... That the school was misrepresented as a bad place to work, as a bad place to be a student in general. And with all due respect to those people who've had a hard time. So I know what it's like to have a job where you have difficulties or you run against walls or you're no longer compatible or that your philosophy's split. But I'm a nurse. Nursing are held to the standard of best practice and I think that's a lot of where the evolution of teaching has gone in this district. I feel like I have an obligation to come here to do some type of damage control because when people read it in the paper that, oh, Academy has all of these problems with their staffing and people are unhappy, then people lose faith in the education that their children are receiving. And our kids really are very, very happy. My children are. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
So we're at a little bit after 8 o'clock. There was some stuff on the agenda that was gonna be connected to the internet, so we're gonna have to bypass that. But I think the thing we should probably do next is see if we can organize the comments into some general issues and maybe... And remember, we're trying to structure future forums to address particular topics because this one is sort of a bit of a brainstorming session.
I agree. The rest of the charts.
Oh, okay.
Could I fill some time?
Sure. Introduce yourself first, Russ.
Thank you. Ron Staley, Superintendent of Schools. I'm struck by the various comments that have been made, both in support of the schools or critical of the schools. I think our philosophy in the school system is that continuous school improvement and we understand that there are issues that we always need to deal with. In some cases, it's related to student issues. In some cases, it's personnel issues. I'd like to think that we have a supportive school system, certainly for students and for staff. We have a system of supervision and evaluation where philosophy is one of support and encouragement and help. And then at some point, there's some judgments that have to be made.
Thanks.
And after many weeks, many months, in some cases, years, there does have to make some judgment in terms of personnel decisions that are pretty hurtful for the individual. But one of the things I wanted to cite, while we have a little time, Diana Mazzucci had given me a letter. I think Diana's still here. And in the letter, she talks about the Vermont Education Association TEL survey. And in her letter, she encourages people to look at the website and look at the survey results. And I did that. And so I would encourage you to do that as well. If you get online, teldermont.org. Pretty easy to find. So as I looked at the results of the surveys, and I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail, but I pulled up the three Rattleburg Town Schools. And the, you know, the headings cover a large listing of areas including facilities, resource, support involvement, managing student conduct, teacher leadership, school leadership, professional development, and overall ratings. And the ones that struck me were the teacher leadership comments. Academy had a 68% response rate. And I think in this survey, if you don't have 50%, it's not valid. If you look at the teacher leadership questions, things like teachers are recognized as educational experts, 10 points above the state average in terms of their response rate, 90% ranking. Teachers are trusted to make sound professional decisions about instruction, above the state average. Teachers are relied upon to make decisions about educational issues, 15 points above the state average, 90% rating. So again, I'm not gonna go through all of these. But it's a range from 10% to 30% above the state average and the district average. When we go to school leadership, again, all of those categories, 10% to 30% above the state average. What struck me, instructional practices and support, this question I think is really important. State assessment data are available in time to impact instructional practices. And I'm actually proud that in all of the surveys that I looked at, it was about 40%, 45% about the state average, indicating to me that the state system doesn't really work. We know that. And if you listened to my opening day speech, you heard that too. But the important points are, local assessment data are available in time to impact instructional practice. 100% response. Teachers use assessment data to inform their instruction. 100% response. Teachers are not talking about kneecap data, although you use it. It's really the local assessment. It's the Ames Web data. It's the day-to-day teaching data that you know as professionals that you use. And then when you look at the overall rating, overall, my school is a good place to work. 90% rating. That's about 10% above the district. It's about 12% above the state average. So yes, there are issues and we deal with these all the time. That's our work. But I'll tell you, I'm very proud to be in the school system. The question about 360 evaluations or teacher evaluation, principal evaluations, we conduct 360 performance reviews every second to third year for every principal. I get the results. I share the evaluation results with the school board based on performance. And if I see that the results are poor, I will do these surveys with teachers anonymously on the principal every year. And as a result, in some cases, we've needed to make shifts in administration, which we do. I'm also proud that we use a school-student climate survey. And if you want to see the results of that, I'd encourage you to ask to get that from your school principal or your teachers. Again, I'm very proud of the results in terms of kids feeling that they feel part of the school system, that they feel safe in the school. There are issues. Kids will tell you that they rate the fact that they're not kind to each other is an issue that we have to work on. Bullying, the things that we have to do to work with kids to make sure that they are active bystanders and that they come forward to an adult. So again, I'd just like to say that... Just a different perspective in terms of looking at the overall health of the school district.
So what's your plan?
Well, the first thing we can do is try to organize the comments into... I mean, we're talking about having several forums throughout the year and we'd like to be able to dedicate to certain topics.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, I think the entire function of this meeting is to figure out the forum in which concerns of the public would come to the school or the administration. I'm not necessarily categorize right now what those concerns are. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, so Mark, you're saying is that this should be more about the structure of the open forum?
The structure of how the public is going to communicate with us. We heard a lot of things tonight. I heard a lot of passion. It was really short on specifics. You know, we can retort with passion, but I'd much rather have some facts and figures to work with. Specific dates, times, incidences. Pardon? And so I'm thinking, how do you get that information to us? What's the best way? Is it in a verbal method? Or is it... Sheila, you presented verbally. You also had a note. Could we have that note? That type of presentation.
So we actually have two... Because when we circulated the agenda, it was... I don't know if it said anything about the structure of the forums, but it did say we're gonna try to take the topics and organize them.
Isn't that part of what we'd be doing?
Sure.
And I think also, yeah, I think... There's other things that I think we would like to hear that weren't necessarily touched in this. I mean, there's a whole piece about programs and resources that, you know...
We heard a lot of attaboys today. You know, things that we do right. We heard a lot of aw shucks, things we don't do so good. But there's a whole bunch in between and there are a lot of people that are not here. We have somewhere today, what, 700 students in a district school system? So we've got hypothetically 1,400 parents that we could hear from, plus all the teachers in the three schools, Canal Street and EES combined.
And then the 6,000 people that pay taxes.
6,000 people that pay taxes.
Mark, could you... The first thing you talked about, about getting information, like getting Sheila's letter and stuff, could you make a category out of that?
Basically.
Could you make a category out of that or a topic out of that that we could address? Like, how do we get information?
I would say protocols. You work all protocol?
So we have a couple of comments. Andy?
Well, in terms of getting specifics, Mark. I'm Andy Davis. I'm a parent, current parent of a student. I'm also a taxpayer and I think that's another issue that needs to be on your topics, how we're managing human resources from the point of view of the taxpayer. I am also a staff person. After Canal Street School was closed, there was the big restructuring. And there wasn't an invitation for feedback on that. I think I'm safe to tell a very quick anecdote about an administrator, an experience I had with an administrator who no longer works for the district. But there was a school board meeting that was to get feedback on the restructuring. I came and spoke. I got absolutely slammed as a staff person for coming to that public meeting and speaking about some of the ramifications of the restructuring. The problems I brought up were never dealt with and I learned how to keep my head down in the foxhole. And if that's... If you wanna really get information as a school board who's at the helm, tell us what the rules are. At the last meeting, one person on the board said, oh, it's a free communication between staff and the board. And another school board member clarified that there are rules about what can be talked about. Can we get a really clear message? Because people that are working in the schools... I hate this idea that some people love our schools and anyone who is critical is somehow out of that, you know, love fest. I love our schools. But I see... I'm close enough to see the warts too because I'm right in there every day. So I'm not here to just say, I like... So I'm not here to just say I love my job and everything's great. I'm here to find out what are the rules for getting you that information, Mr. Truhan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would say there may be avenues from several different groups, you know, is maybe we need to look at an avenue that is coming from staff and faculty, another avenue from parents, another avenue from the 6,000 people which shell across the park.
I would say community as a whole, I think, I just, if I can speak, okay, Sheila Lynton, I think the, I get, I cringe when people use the word taxpayers, we're all taxpayers. We all pay taxes for a variety of different reasons, whether we own a home or not. Understand your usage of that language.
It's inclusive.
But we're a community, as a community, we support our village of children, and we all support the community as a whole, whether we pay rent or whether we pay a mortgage. So I would, I would refrain from using taxpayers as a means of getting communication, it's a communication with the community as a whole, first of all. Second of all, Ron, what you brought up, my understanding of when I was on the school board and you brought up the 360 review, what I was saying was that those 360 reviews, as I remember, is internal. It is not external. So just so the audience here understands, it's not misunderstanding, is that you get input from the staff and the teachers, from the board, and you look at the information with regards to a variety of different demographics or factors of administration. But you don't get community input, and that is completely different. And as Andy has spoke, is that when we're talking about, again, I said I stood up in solidarity for all of those who are experiencing things, and not to just get on this bad wagon of, oh, we're happy. So when I came to this meeting, I'm a little confused, now I'm very happy that there is this duality of opinions being represented here today, but at the same time, I'm concerned that it's like, I wasn't, I wasn't necessarily coming here to hear how great the schools are, even though I know that's an important discussion to have, because it minimizes what many people were originally coming for this meeting for, is to address what isn't working well. And again, that's not to say that we're not doing things well. So again, the 360 review needs to be external. I look at these groupings as both being an internal function and an external function, that there is bullying, alleged bullying and harassment going on by, between teachers and staff and administration. We have laws on the books for our children, but we don't have laws on the books as we saw at the last meeting or was said, for internally, how staff deals with them. You talked last time, Margaret, about the union and about them needing to maybe look at their union and restructure policies and procedures in order for them to have this relief or grievance process. Those are the things, as a community citizen, that I would like to see happen. 360 external review, internally looking at things that are going on amongst people in the district.
So I was going to clarify, so one of the things, the participants in the 360 review do include parents and other people, so it's not just the school board and?
Right, but it's a selected few, that's the problem. It isn't like, it isn't like, I'm a parent of an Oak Grove student, and I get the, I'm asked for the opportunity to participate in that survey. Everybody, anybody and everybody can participate. It's a selected few, and you can hold people, you can choose, you can pick. Oh, Liz Parent, let's just say for me, as an example, whether people look at me as honorary in this situation or not. I'm an active citizen, an active community person, I'm an active member of the school system, I have children in the school system, what my concern, I'm not getting input, I'm not getting asked to be input in that. So who gets chosen to actually do that? It's not who do we get to pick and choose when we feel like getting input to create the data that makes us look good. It's that we actually want to hear what the community has to say, and then discern of how we can solve those issues. And we have to recognize that if one person matters, we have to stop minimizing people's experiences. What, you matter, right? You matter, you matter. One person matters. So why are we minimizing, whether it's Lauren's testimony last week, or whether it's other teachers in this room who feel wrong, or whether it's community members responding, why are we minimizing one person's experience? Why are we saying that those persons' experiences don't matter because 99 other percent is happy? That's not okay.
So I think it's pretty loud and clear that one of the topics we need to investigate is process for feedback, particularly for staff, right?
Internal and external.
We definitely have that as a topic.
And how does the staff and administration be held accountable?
So I just want to clarify too, we do have policies that are based on state statute for harassment of employees and discrimination policies.
Yep.
So those are in place.
Yep. And I recognize that, and they're clearly not working. And that's what I'm saying, is that.
Just, I really didn't want to go to this place of the he said, she said kind of stuff. So after I make my two little points, I'd like to make a bigger point, but in reference to the harassment policies, those policies only protect protected classes.
Exactly.
Okay? So that's something that perhaps we want to deal with. How do we protect people who are not in those classes? Okay? Number two is, I really have to kind of disagree with what Ron said about the 360 reviews, because in my 20-plus years of teaching, I can recall two occasions when I was invited to take a survey about an administrator. And on one of those occasions, the only reason that I ended up taking it was that I had to ask, because only certain people in my building were invited to do that, okay? So these things are not consistently enforced.
That may have been a flawed procedure, but when Mike Frill was principal, every staff member.
Yes, that's the one.
Jen Hemmingson.
That's the one that I did take, yes. Indeed.
So I disagree with what you're saying, at least for the last eight years.
Well, no, I'm acknowledging that, yeah. But I'm saying there was another time.
Yeah, yeah, 12 years ago, 15 years ago.
No, no.
This is 2013, things happened back in 2006, '07, '08, '09.
You want to know what year it was?
No, not really, but I was just saying, something mentioned today, but things may have been a little.
It was two years ago.
It was just two years ago, I think that's a really important point.
But that's not at Oak Grove School.
But even if it's in history, if the history is presented in the future, it does matter. And that's what I keep on history, our history makes our future, and if we're not willing to deal with the systemic issues in our history that are being perpetuated now in the future and today, then you're just going around and around in circles.
Okay. But can I finish my, sorry, thank you. But what, the way, you know, I really was hoping that this was not going to be some kind of divisive meeting. I really wanted this to be like, let's plan for hearing from people. And the way I'm sort of framing it for myself as, you know, trying to put myself in your guys' place, the school board's place, is that I would, you know, I would really want to create ways to gather information from other sources, not that there's anything wrong with that, as Seinfeld would say, with the administration, okay? But you need to have a lot of different perspectives from which to get information. And that's not to say that who's right or wrong or anything, in fact, there's a lot of times probably when, you know, there'll be agreement. But that this is what needs to be created, is a way for other perspectives to come and be heard and have some sort of, you know, civil conversation about issues. And not just, when I say issues, I don't just mean negative stuff, I mean, you know, just like, okay, how, what do we value here? What do we want our kids to know? What, you know, what do we want to happen in kindergarten? Or what do we, where do we want them to be when they graduate from high school? You know, it just, there are these conversations that I hope that we can have and find a way to structure them.
So can I just, getting back to Meg, so we have this one thing in common, because I, those conversations about what is it that we want for our children, and what are our schools preparing them for? Yeah, those are the conversations that I want to have. So I don't have the answer to this, but I used to work in marketing. So, and one of the great tools of marketing is the focus group, which is, it's either, you know, a self-selected constituency of vodka drinkers or whatever, you know, or staff at various schools or parents get together and discuss limited topics. So I'm suggesting that that's a way to gather a lot of information and have those kind of discussions that would hopefully inform the work of the board going on, because that's what I want. I want input that's going to inform the work going forward. And so, and, you know, so it's a suggestion. It's also, here's the other thing, you know, this is the work of a long time. One of the things about being on the school board or being a parent or having a job of any kind is that seeing change, it takes a long time sometimes. And, you know, these past few weeks, there's been a great sense of urgency about things that may take a while to find the path that's what really best for our children and these institutions and this town. So I would suggest finding a way for the board to, and not in a systematic way, and probably over a long period of time, talk to constituencies about these issues. And I don't know that we can group those all tonight, but I feel like it's a place to start, to start looking at groups of things, so.
The reason that we, what we expected was going to happen when we set this meeting date a few weeks ago, was that we would sit out, we would go downstairs, get our dinner, come up and sit and talk about how we would plan a series of public engagement activities. And one of the things we were going to do is talk about things like Margaret's suggestion, and I had looked up what the Bennington-Rutland District did, they've already been through a process, it was pretty effective. And some of the questions, and what they did was put people, showed people videos that were somewhat controversial, and then put them to tables and had them talk about it. And they did it in a series of towns, they did it in a series of events. And the topics were much broader than, I want to just read you some of the questions. "To what extent should education prepare students for the future? Does this change?" "Should education focus more on filling up students with knowledge or waking up each student to their personal abilities?" "To what extent should education be standardized or customized?" "To what extent should education be relevant to students?" "To what extent should students be taught learning skills such as initiative and perseverance in addition to academic content?" Those are the kinds of questions that I hope we will get of broad grains of community people discussing. And that was what we intended to do tonight. And at some point, we're going, you know, we will continue that process, and this will obviously become part of it. But what we're supposed to be doing is talking about how are we going to engage people, how are we going to do the factoring. And the purpose of that came out of a couple of meetings we had over the summer with the training meetings for us with the Vermont School Board Association, is to create a vision for the schools, to articulate a vision for the schools so that we have a question about, are we testing too much? What's the vision? What do people say they want for their kids? And that's what we'll use to guide our policies and to guide the practice of the professionals in the system.
Can there also be, I'm teen, read, I teach at Academy, can there also be a discussion about what we're doing well and how we can continue on that vein? Because I think the reason so many people showed up tonight from Academy and in support of the schools is that it was kind of shocking to hear this, because our schools have been doing so well, and we feel like we're on this upward momentum, like our kids are happier, it's showing in all the surveys, they're, like academics are improving, the teachers are happier. And so I think everyone was kind of caught off guard, like this is, this is a good, we're doing well, we're in the right direction. So I would love to see that instead of it just being forums that are like, what are we doing, you know, you know, finger pointing and that stuff, that we take some time to kind of look at what we're doing well and how we can continue to move forward in that vein? Because it just feels like it's a lot of looking at very small, small things that are not going well when we have all this good stuff happening, where it usually works better to focus on the good and move from there, rather than to pinpoint the bad.
Actually, you haven't spoken, so.
My name is Ellen Schwartz, I live in Brattleboro, and I actually used to be a teacher in this district, in Cutney, a really long time ago, for about nine years. And I just retired as, 30 years altogether of teaching, but mostly in Massachusetts. So I don't really have any recent experience as a teacher in this district, and I really came tonight as a community member who was just interested in finding out more about what was going on. And mostly what I have to say is about sort of what I'm hearing at this meeting, it's, I don't really have a lot of background. I do about education and some of these issues around testing and so forth, but that's not really what I want to say right now. What I feel like is, what I'm hearing is that people are having really different experiences from one person to another, and that you're talking about getting feedback from people, and I think you can come up with any process you want, but that if you really, really want to get feedback, that the people receiving the feedback have to be willing to hear things that might be uncomfortable to hear. Because if you only want to hear what you want to hear, it doesn't matter what forum you set up for getting it, you're going to hear, you're going to select out the things you want to hear, and the things you don't want to hear are still going to be there, they're still going to be out there happening, it's just that you won't be responding to this, because you're selecting what you want to hear. So I think, I don't, there's not, there isn't a forum that makes that, or a format that makes that possible, but if that doesn't happen, it just feels like you can be having these discussions like over and over, or we as a community could be having the same discussions. The other thing I think is really important is that I think this jargon can be used to cover up a lot of differences, so we can talk about data and data-driven instruction. And that's like, I mean, I was in teaching, it's a term of jargon. It doesn't really mean anything unless people are able to talk about like, what kind of data, what do you mean by that? It's just, and so I really would sort of like caution us and the board in particular from getting too caught up with all that, the jargon. The other thing that I'm hearing is that there are people who feel like they're on a team that's working really well, and some people feel like they're not on the team. And that to me is, having worked in, I mean, this, I'm reflecting on a whole different experience in a different district, that's not a good situation, because the people, it's divisive. And the people who feel like they're not on the team feel like they're not being heard. And they feel, and it's all the worse when you feel like there's a whole team over there of people who are like, they're the people who are the team players, and you're the one who feels like you're not the team player because you're questioning something or doing something different, or you're somehow like not a member of the team. So as, to the extent that that sort of like, we're the team players and there's some people who aren't, can be broken apart, you're going to get more honest feedback. And then the last thing I want to say is that if you're really looking, it sounds from what some people said, that there were things that you were asking for more specifics, that there were things that were specific but couldn't be said in a public forum because of reasons of confidentiality. So if you're looking at formats, that one of the things that you need to do is have a format where people can come forward and not necessarily this kind of a public forum where they can't share those confidential things without breaking not only their own, somebody else's confidentiality, but if you're not able, if you don't have a way to hear those things in some, in some way, then you're never going to get below the surface of what's going on. You're just, people are going to be talking in whatever generalities they can speak in at a public meeting. So those are just like my thoughts, having, you know, just on what I'm hearing tonight, not having really come with any, you know, much background about the specifics in this district.
Those are good thoughts. So I'd like to make a quick comment, which is, on the school board, we sort of have two jobs. One is to create the vision, and the other is to do a budget that we can get through town meeting. I want everybody here to realize that we won't be doing any of these things if we can't get a budget through the town meeting. And we came very close last year to not getting that budget. So we, while we're doing things, trying to make improvements to process, we have another job to do, and that job can't get done unless we get support from the community to make sure that we don't hogtie the changes we can make by having a budget knocked it out. I don't know when the last time anybody knows a school budget in town of Brattleboro did not get through town meeting. Ron, do you have a sense of that?
It hasn't been for 12 years.
So more than 12 years. And we were six votes away from that. So keep your passion for process and for dollars, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
One other thing that, we actually have a third responsibility as a school board, and that's to make sure that the things that are supposed to be happening in the schools are happening, that they're happening in the way that they're supposed to be happening. So that's why we're doing this, and that's why we're trying to figure out these problems.
I have one comment to the group as a whole, we have representatives from all three schools. Do you see in this process of getting information to the board, to the administration, an increased role and responsibility of the individual school's parent-teacher organizations?
No.
No.
No?
Say why?
Please, say why.
Could you repeat your question? I'm sorry.
Do you see an increased role in the parent-teacher organizations in each individual school, getting together and discussing some of these very things that we were talking about tonight, to find out what the consensus is among those parents, and then presenting that to the school board? Is that an unreasonable thing to ask for or to suggest? Is, is that an unreasonable thing to ask for, or to suggest?
Diane Onsuki, I think parent-teacher groups try to stay focused on their particular school and, and what's going on, on a day-to-day basis, not on necessarily on philosophy. You know, it's, it's, it's focused on trying to raise money so the winter sports program can continue. And I think if you ask that of them, I don't know if those parents could put that kind of time into that.
Okay.
I, Sheila Lynton.
I'm sorry, hold on.
Catherine Mason, Oak Grove, I think it's a reasonable question to put to our parent-teacher organization. They're an existing entity, the, the interest in our parent-teacher organization can be incredibly vital and strong at times, and it can lean. But it's a pre-existing entity that I feel like we'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge their existence and that they are part of this process.
But Sheila, you said no, what was your rationale?
Thank you for clarifying your question, because now I understand it better. So I, what I meant to say, so I'll say yes. This is what I meant to say, is that I agree with Catherine that they could be utilized as an entity, but I agree with Diane, that maybe if it was something on the agenda as being part of our PTO, is something on the agenda where people can express it, and that's actually something when I was on the school board that I was advocating for. But the barriers to that, and the obstacles to that is, it's a very few group of people who are representing the whole school. And, and so when you talk about that, you again, it's an isolated population, who, who, like any parent group could be any five to twenty people. So not saying it's not a good idea, I'm just saying that it's only one of the many mechanisms, of course, that could be used in gathering information.
So I think that there's actually, because the reality is that when you ask people to come out and talk about anything, a self-selecting group is gonna come. And that's, that's just the reality of a process like this. And so, so sure, the PTO is a self-selecting group, but there are people who are, you know, really involved in their schools. There, you know, you're never gonna get the people who are just never gonna show up, or never fill out a survey, or never, you know, the people who aren't gonna respond, you're never gonna hear of, hear from. And they're out there. But I'm, you know, the thing is, is that our concern is about the people we're not hearing. We wanna find avenues to hear from more people, and I think that that's what we're trying to convey. And, and do that in a way that gives us information that we can act on for the future.
And, and you know, I think that, for instance, at Oak Grove, if you look at the growth in parent participation in school events, you know, regardless of whether there may be issues related to each individual school, I think in general, all three schools really have done a, a great job to try to bring parents that are really busy, you know, under a lot of stress, into the school community, and we should take more advantage of that. And, and maybe the PTOs is one way of doing that.
I just have one very quick comment. I'm not involved in the school, I don't have a feeling pro or con about the PTO, but I, one of the things you said was to come to some consensus. And I would actually discourage you from thinking about it that way, because I think what you wanna hear is a divergence of opinions, rather than asking the PTO to have a meeting and then come with a consensus view. You're never gonna hear the minority view if they have to come to consensus. So you wanna hear, you wanna have a process where you can hear the, the range of views that parents bring, rather than not, than expecting that they're gonna come to consensus.
Well, perhaps, perhaps in a group such as the PTOs, I work, PTAs, PTOs.
Frogs!
Anyway, it would, it would, it's, it's a forum for questions to be asked, for opinions to be rendered, for information to be taken down by whatever internal mechanism the PTO has. And it could be divergent, several topics coming to the school board. Doesn't have to be a consensus.
That's all I was saying, yeah.
But Melissa, you mentioned it yourself, that currently we are facing some really dramatic shifts in economic issues, changing demographics, changing family structures. It probably comes as no surprise to anybody that more and more of the teachers in the schools are being asked to perform surrogate parental responsibilities, what had been their responsibility near two-four. And it makes it really, really tough for the teachers. So perhaps by increasing the role of the PTO, we are going to be covering some of those.
There's barriers though, I think we have to.
There are barriers.
What the economic barriers are. There's an assumption that every parent is literate, we send home notes, we send home surveys, and we have to rec, I'm sorry, I, you know, we have to recognize that there are parents that are not literate.
Twenty percent of the state of Vermont is functionally illiterate.
Okay, so based on that assumption, or that fact, then, then I suggest, as another means of gathering information, is that we take an extra effort of reaching out for those families who can't read, don't have transportation, don't have childcare, and, and don't really even understand what the PTO might be, or have.
And that's what I'm saying, would not the vehicle be somebody who has another child in the same school? You know, that organization where there's a certain amount of community within the neighborhood?
I think that the problem, well, you might wanna ask the, I, I know that at Green Street, the PTO took a big nosedive, and so there, I don't even know how much of it exists right now. But I don't necessarily think that you're gonna get an eclectic mix of parents. That's my suspicion.
Probably not, but you may get some interested parents.
I, I don't know, I don't work there anymore, so that's gonna be something else as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Gabrielle, you have your hand up.
Yeah, Susan Riego again. One of the things that, that really, just wanna turn it back a little bit to the school board, and you were asking for specific suggestions. And I guess one of the things that I felt coming away from that meeting last week was, really have a situation where there's two lawyers sitting in the ground, and one person has already spent ten thousand dollars, that was, you know, stated in the meeting. And, you know, as a community member, I don't wanna say the word taxpayer, but, you know, and since you just mentioned yourself, Peter, there's a budget and there's a limit. We don't have a lot of money in this district, it's really edgy, everybody feels on edge. I would desperately be, very sorry, let's put it that way, where anything could ever happen, where it's up to that, somebody feels that they can sue this district, and there's a whole lot of money involved. What a waste. We need that money, so badly. And I just feel like there are some resources in town even that could help us ultimately prevent some of that stuff from escalating. And I guess that's what I was hoping to see last week, was a de-escalation. I mean, you were talking, I mean, someone was mentioning about their experience in business, part of my experience in business has been customer service. And I know, you know, just from listening to people, how powerful it is just to be heard and have that cathartic experience of being able to say what is upsetting them, and have people listen to that and go, oh, wait a minute, you know, I guess I could've done that differently, or I could've done this differently. I'm a member of the Restorative Justice Program, and that's something we deal with every week, and I would really love to invite, and Ron, maybe you've already been to that, it's just such a fantastic setup, you know? It's already a setup, it's already here, we already have Larry Haynes, who's like brilliant at mediation. And I would just like to say that maybe that would be something the school board could, you know, could do, is to spend a couple of times at Restorative Justice, take a look at what that is. Because, you know, by and large, at the end of the day, you guys are kind of the end of the line, if someone can't get it through their, their grievance through the, what do you call it, not the school, but the, the union. I mean, there's, there's obviously great resources in the re, the union, I mean, definitely. But if some of those have been exhausted, and we still have this, you know, great person who really, or several people, whatever, who we really would love to see in the community feeling great about it again, I would just love to see it be turned around. And I think Restorative Justice could be good, it's already part of our town, right? And we're already, you know, they're there, there is, there is a resource for, in many ways. So I would just like to suggest that maybe that's something, you know, see what you can get out of it, because I think there is a sort of a need for a functional role in the school board of taking a look and helping to de-escalate. And I'd love to see de-escalation daytime, I'd love to see restore, restoration of people feeling that they can be empowered again. Does that make sense?
Is that a function of Restorative Justice?
Yes, to re-empower people back in the community, no matter what the heck they've done. We deal with a lot of non-violent offenders, but some of them have been violent. And by and large, these people don't repeat, they come away from their feeling, you know, like they're okay again. Because a lot of times, there's a lot of punitive stuff that happens to people, and, you know, they really wanna be back at the table, so to speak. They wanna be back, you know, feeling like a good full-fledged community member. And they have this opportunity to do it, and they do it, and every time, I see this all the time, it almost always works, it doesn't always. But I've seen it work many times, I see these same people wandering around, I get my hair done by some people, I see the person plowing, I see all these different situations, and I see, wow, that person's been there, that person, they're back, they're feeling strong and okay. We all make mistakes. Some of us get caught making mistakes.
I get caught all the time. So Deborah, you have a comment, and then?
I was gonna say, from, I have a kind of outsider perspective, and this, since I've lived in San Francisco, a big city for most of my adult life, I moved here specifically to be more a part of the community and to have the efficacy and power of having individual voices, have a voice in their community. And one of the things that was on my mind in the seven weeks I was out of town, and he was, how do I communicate with parents and how do I engage them? And there were, it was incredibly hectic, there's time is never enough in the teaching profession, but I really, I was thinking about, well, can't we have those parents nice in open house? What can the district do, or the, or the district should do to support me, because I gotta go? At a certain point, I really felt like it is down to me. If I want things to change, I have to be the one to initiate those relationships, especially because the teacher's on the front line. And there were parents that I was afraid of, that there were like violence issues in the home, and I still thought, I need to find a way to engage those people, because their child shows up here every day. I'm wondering if there could be some support for the teachers around, how do you talk to parents who aren't engaged? How do you engage a parent? How do you push? It, it seems like we all, like, as a new teacher beginning, I know there are, there's an incredible wealth of experiences out there, maybe there could be more mentorship among the teachers, and opportunities for parents to show up at schools.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Deb Whitkis, I am a community member, and I also work as a parent outreach coordinator for Greater Falls Prevention Coalition up in Bellows Falls. And I've been working on family and parent engagement for many, many years now, and I've had a lot of wonderful, extremely diverse experiences. And I just have to say, John Hopkins is doing a lot of research on how do you engage all families and have them to be partner parents and caregivers as partners in education. And they have a model that is just amazing, and is there to help teachers to figure out how do you engage parents? How do you not be afraid of a parent that, you know, you know, might show up and might, might look a little bit different, or have a little bit of a different story? And how schools can create parent-friendly school climates for all parents. And, and the onus, to be quite honest, if you really want change, the onus does come from the school. We have the power to do that. And let me tell you something, as a former teacher as well, when you engage parents as partners in real and meaningful ways, they step up. And your job is less of a social worker, and, you know, it, it can happen, and there's plenty of wonderful models out there with great outcomes. You don't have to sit here and try to figure out how, you know, a lot of great prestigious universities have done the research.
Thank you.
So, we're still, the methods by which to bring concerns to the board is, whoever can use the station.
Well, I think the methods are, I mean, it's part of the protocols, it's, it's, it's part, it's one of the topics. I'm not sure what other.
So you have about nine minutes left. So.
I guess we're still taking comments, so.
Do you have a mailbox? We can jar them or through, the way to give a message?
We all have mailboxes. And we also have emailboxes as well.
I think our phone numbers and emails are on the district website.
Yeah. I, I, someone expressed some concern about how easy or difficult it was to contact board members. So I, I mean, I don't think our phone numbers and emails are on the website, are they?
Yes, they are.
Are they really easy to, can you get there in three clicks?
I wasn't able to find them. They're there, they're there. I found them.
Is there a central email?
No.
No. So you're saying not, not our mailboxes, you'd like to place a suggestion box for the school board, so people could just drop them by?
Not everybody has computers. I know we live in computer age, but.
So just, just another thing that I know, I know that on the, that the town puts out a list of all the town meeting reps, and all the school board's names, addresses, phone numbers, and emails is listed on that list along with all the town meeting members, and you know, it's.
But somebody should be able to type in Browneboro School Board.
Sure.
Get them by the line names.
So if you wanna know various ways, plus, there's still a phone book, and, right? You're on the phone book, and things like that, so.
I'll be with the stamp on?
I think it goes back to what the walls are though. So, so if, so if I was to drop off a letter, email, whatever, to you, what is my, what expectations do I have, and what accountability as a board do you have to mean for giving you this information?
At the very least, you'd get an acknowledgement that we received it, and we would take a look at what you have. Sometimes what you were looking for us to change may not happen. Is that going to be acceptable, or is that going to generate some more discussion?
Are you asking a little more question?
No, I'm just throwing that out as a general.
So I think one is acknowledgement, acknowledging that you've got the letter, that you've seen the letter, but you know, just, I think that the second step to that is being able to converse with that individual if they choose to. So if that person then wants to follow up with an in-person meeting to either clarify or explain, or go over the letter in which they're talking about, but to have a decision made without understanding what the discussion was, and you're making that decision, but then come back to the person that was never engaged in a conversation from a letter that they sent you, I think there needs to be another step in that process.
Well, by approaching a individual board member, you're approaching the entire board. Okay, so any, any deliberation and decision would be a board function.
Right. But that often happens without the person who addresses them.
When we get to a specific issue, may not be timely enough for the person submitting the idea, suggestion, comment, fill in the blank. Okay? Again, the best, the least we'll do is acknowledge the receipt of that, and that we will come under discussion. But as, as Pete said, we've got another duty, and that's to make sure that the bills are paid, the teachers are paid, the school system's chugging along, and we're not defaulting on any of our debts. And that eats up a tremendous amount of time.
But I think, and it's fair that we, we, we will work on a process for responding to.
Yes, and that's.
Because there's no point of asking us to respond to give you our letter if you're not gonna go anywhere.
That is the point of this meeting, is, you know, how do you get a message to us for us to look at and deliver it? And it's everything from a personal appearance, because the public can show up every board meeting if they so desire, and there is, is a section for public comment. You can have a letter, email, phone call, and I love to use this, tie it up to a brick throw through somebody's window, you know, just get our attention.
Melissa had her hand up, and then Vicky has Vicky's.
Y'all have questions. So my, my question is, is I don't, unless it happened when I stepped out. My biggest concern is about staff feeling safe. That has been the overarching issue for the years that I worked in a school, is staff not feeling safe. And believe me, as a counselor, a lot of staff came to me with a lot of concerns, but when push came to shove, I need my job. I don't, I, you know, no, no, I'm gonna just, la la la, I'm gonna work my way through this, I'm just gonna look the other way, I didn't see that happen. And, and that's really concerning, because, you know, it is real, that there is tremendous fear coming from many teachers in, I would say, all the schools. And somehow I feel not believed by that, but I can assure you that that is absolutely the truth, that people are fearful. And if, and the response, if the response from you is, the union's there to protect them, I could tell you a long story about that. It's a whole separate issue, okay? So it's no joke, that the, that the whole system, like Lauren was talking about, relative to protection and the union, there's a lot of things broken there. So there is a sincere need for teachers to feel safe, expressing their concerns without fear of retaliation, without fear of having other negative consequences occur. This is the real deal. So my big question and my challenge to you is how can there be a, a system, whatever that is? Because I know it's tricky, because, you know...
Because I know it's tricky, because, you know, most of the time anonymous letters aren't accepted. Sometimes they are. Depends on who you are. So, you know, that doesn't get you very far. So I, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm telling you with all sincerity that there is so much that teachers really are feeling and experiencing and are just having to look the other way, and it's creating stress. Teachers have talked about PTSD. They really need the support, and they're so afraid to ask for it, but that's my, my challenge to you.
And I would go back to you and say the, the union needs to be tweaked.
See, and there we go. And then goes the dance. But we're talking about a forum. Issue here is a forum. What is the manner in which people can come forth?
Then that's one of the things we will look at.
Absolutely. That's what I'm suggesting.
So I, I'd like to comment that I am very concerned that we don't have a vehicle for communication independent of the contract and the grievance process. That, 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 that doesn't work. So we, we have to figure out both legally and in terms of board governance, how that works.
Absolutely.
That's perfect.
Vicky, you have a question?
So I know we're getting close to nine o'clock, and I'm sorry that we don't have more time, because it's, I hate to say it, but it looks to me like there needs to be another meeting.
Oh, of course.
Because we have.
There can be a lot.
We've got tons of topics, but we don't really still have a structure. And, you know, we have some ideas for maybe some small protocols or some, some things that could happen, but there, you know, I think there needs to be some serious careful planning for some, you know, ongoing structure where different constituencies can get together and have these discussions.
Well, Andy said this is a start. Margaret said it takes time, so.
Yes, right. So I just don't want to leave without.
This was what we were going to do tonight.
I know, I know.
And we felt that it was, all of us, I think, felt it was more important to let people speak.
Yeah.
And we sensed that it was, it was important to have people speak. So we wanted to hear everyone speak. We've, we're already thinking since the summer on what types of forums might work, but we wanted to hear from all of you, too.
So there's going to be a lot more meetings.
Yay!
But we don't know what that might be. That might be the thing to set the next meeting in the next two minutes.
So how about if we, how about if we have Diana do the last comment, and then I think we're, we're ready to wrap up?
Don't get Jen, she was.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jen, you were next.
I just had a quick question. I'm, I'm just confirming that comments with you via email or snail mail are also shared with the administration? So that would not be the way to go if somebody were.
That would be a decision of the board, I would say, if we wanted to share with the administration.
Well, then I think that needs to be.
I think, I think we need to.
I think it would be clear.
We can't forget it.
We need to figure that out, too.
I think that's probably the quickest, that's probably the top of the list, is make sure it's really clear to the community what happens.
Right. And what doesn't happen.
Right.
Is just, it needs to be just as clear as well.
It's like safety all the way from top to bottom and bottom to top.
Diana, do you want to?
Just a quick thought. Margaret brought this up at Wednesday's meeting, and Lauren attested to it also. If you want more people to come to regular school board meetings, maybe you should format it like tonight, where you have an X amount of time where people in the audience can talk about the reason that they're there, and then cut it off and have your time to do the business and the warrants and all those things. What happens so often is that people come to a school board meeting and they're bleary-eyed by the time it finally gets around, I mean, I know you guys are, too. By the time it finally gets to the issues, people have left.
Yeah, well, the, the agenda always starts with the public comment period, but because of the nature of a recent meeting or two, there's been some flux with that. But in general, the, the meeting starts with public comment period.
And, and I'll just say that our practice has been when there were people who were on the agenda to present whatever issue curriculum, generally, especially if it's teachers, we know you've been working all day, and usually we take.
Put it from.
Put it right at the. So our practice is to try to not have bleary-eyed people waiting till midnight, because we, you know, don't want to subject people who have to go before room full of children.
Well, I would try to attend more often.
Please.
Can I just say thank you to all of you?
Yes.
Because I know how hard you've worked.
Yes.